There we go.
We will now proceed with the public hearings with the ordinances. Item number three, P 32, Madam Clerk, was it noticed?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item P 32 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on February 5th, 2025, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Mr. Peters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nick Charles Peters, Planning Development Economic Growth. Item P 32 is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan for the Little Road PD. This is a request for a continuance to the April 22, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting in Newport Ritchie at 1:30 p.m.
Move continuance.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next item, P 33, have notice?
Item P 33 was published in Tampa Bay Times on February 19th, 2025.
Item P 33 is PD 250060. This is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan for the Fletcher Subarea PD. This is a request to continue the item to the April 22, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 p.m. in Newport Ritchie.
Move continuance.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P 34, notice?
Item P 34 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on February 5th, 2025.
Thank you. Terry?
Item P 34 is PD 250103. This is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Land Development Code for the accessory dwelling units. This is requested for a continuance to the April 9, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 p.m. in Dade City.
Before we go with the continuance, before we go there, I know it's advertised, but any reason why we continue it?
I would imagine some language. We'll get that.
This is the one Commissioner Starky wanted to be here for, isn't it not?
That is Patrick Dutter, Planning Development Economic Growth. Yes, Commissioner Starky wanted to be here for this. Also, we did some additional time to do some additional research to be prepared.
Okay, all right. Okay. Have a motion to continue. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Continued. Now we'll proceed with the public hearings. Would the county attorney please read the procedures for rezonings?
Be happy to, Mr. Chairman. There are two rezoning agendas, regular and consent. Staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners. If staff or planning commission has recommended approval and there is no opposition, the application will be considered by the board without further presentation. If staff or planning commission has recommended denial or if there is opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation. The opposition will be given three minutes for each individual or five minutes for a group representative, and the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or planning commission recommendation or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning may at this time request that the petition be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address and whether or not you've been sworn for the record. These are quasi judicial public hearings. The law in Florida is that mere public support or opposition of an application is insufficient for this board to take action. Please limit your comments to those criteria for rezoning found within the board's land development code. Madam Clerk, would you like to swear the public in?
Thank you. If you are here to speak on the remaining items that are on public hearing, please stand up, and I will go ahead and administer the oath. Okay. Is that everyone? All right, please raise your, okay, hold on. Okay, raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God? Thank you, you may be seated.
Today, we have one public hearing on the consent agenda, four items that are continuances. We'll start with P 35, continuance.
Item P 35 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on February 5th, 2025.
Item P 35 is PD 25CU01. This is a conditional use request for C and M Low Limited Partnership and Port Hudson Marina LLC slash Old Dixie Highway Marina. This is a request to continue the item to the April 22, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 p.m. in Newport Ritchie.
Move continuance.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P 36.
Item P 36 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on February 5th, 2025, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Item P 36 is PD 257721. This is a zoning amendment to the name of Little Road MPUD Master Plan Unit Development by Negoyantin. This is, this comes to you with a recommendation for a continuance to the April 22, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 p.m. in Newport Ritchie.
Move continuance.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P 37.
Item P 37 was published in Tampa Bay Times on May 1st, 2024. Oh wait, I'm sorry. This item was continued from the June 18th, 2024 BCC meeting to the August 21st, 2024 BCC meeting, where it was continued to September 3rd, 2024 BCC meeting, where it was continued to the October 8th, 2024 BCC meeting, which was canceled due to the Hurricane Milton. The item appeared on the November 12th, 2024 BCC meeting, where it was continued to January 28th, 2025 BCC meeting, where it was continued to today. Thank you.
Item P 37 is PD 257739. This is the zoning, this is a zoning amendment to the name of Fletcher MPUD by Mary L. Fletcher, Revocable Trust, and Richard D. Fletcher. This is being requested for a continuance to the April 22, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 p.m. in Newport Ritchie.
Move to continue.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P 38.
Item P 38 was published in Tampa Bay Times on August 28th, 2024. The item was continued from the October 22, 2024 BCC meeting to the December 10th, 2024 BCC meeting, where it was continued to the January 28th, 2025 BCC meeting, where it was continued to the, to the February 25, 2025 BCC meeting, where it was continued to today.
Item P 38 is PD 257818. This is a zoning amendment to the name of HCM Hospitality LLC, which is a change in zoning from a C2 and MF1 to an MF1, multiple family, medium density district. This comes to you with a request to continue the item to the April 22, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 p.m. in Newport Ritchie.
Move continuance.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And on the consent agenda, P 39, Madam Clerk?
Item P 39 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on February 5th, 2025, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Item P 39 is PD 257855. This is a zoning amendment to the name of Gustavo A. and Angela Treos slash Land O' Lakes Retail, which is a change in zoning from an AR agricultural residential district to a C2 general commercial district in the south central Pasco County, on the north side of State Road 54, and approximately 1,020 feet west of Wilson Road, containing approximately 1.93 acres. This comes to you with a recommendation to adopt the zoning amendment and to authorize the chairman to execute one original of the resolution.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak against this item?
I have no one signed up and no one on WebEx for this item.
Okay, then we'll leave it on consent. Move approval. Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We'll go to item P 40.
Item P 40 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on February 23rd, 2025, and March 2nd, 2025.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Lori Jo Bryant, Real Property Division. The real property team has received a petition to vacate a portion of platted drainage and utility easement filed by the Charleston Communities 4 LLC. The purpose for this vacation is to allow for future development. There were no objections to this petition, and the team recommends approval.
Okay. Any comments from the board? Anyone here?
You got to ask for public comment, and?
Yeah, anyone here from the public who would like to speak to this item?
Mr. Chair, I have no one signed up and no one on WebEx for this item.
Okay, with no public comment, have a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item P 41.
Item P 41 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on March 12th, 2025.
Good afternoon, Amy Toll with Planning Development Economic Growth. So today, you will be hearing the companion resolution to what was previously proved, I believe, in February. We had a change to the wellhead protection map to include the Hudson Water Works wells as part of the maps in our comprehensive plan. This is the companion resolution for both wells that were added to the comprehensive plan map for the land development code, so this will be a quick presentation. So this is the Hudson Water Works resolution. It is a resolution amending the wellhead protection area map to depict the Hudson Water Works public supply wells pursuant to Section 808.6(c) of the land development code. There was a companion to CPA 2406 wells, wellfields, and wellhead protection areas. So this is going to be one of two sites. They are located, this one is located in the West Market area where your red star is located. You can see the blue triangles next to the area in question, so those are the proposed Hudson Water Works wells that will be added. And we do have a consultant that ended up doing the analysis for the wellhead flows to depict the areas for the five-year and the 10-year wellhead protection area. So this will be adopted in our comprehensive, or has been adopted into our comprehensive plan. So with that, we actually recommend to adopt the resolution amending the wellhead protection area map, sorry, press the button, to depict the Hudson Water Works supply wells and authorize the chairman to execute the originals. If you have any questions, I'm happy to help.
That's the wrong graphic, though, because that's, that motion's for the?
I know, that's why I read the wrong one, or the correct one, to record. This is not a comp plan amendment, so we don't need to worry about that.
Okay. Now, are we the applicant, or is Hudson Water Works the applicant?
We were assisting Hudson Water Works, so this is a county initiated. We did also process the comprehensive plan amendment, but we did it with support from Hudson Water Works.
Okay. Does the applicant wish to present or speak to the item?
I think it was county initiated.
Right, so would you just carry it then?
But I don't know whether Hudson is here to speak in favor.
We do have the consultant, if you have any questions on that.
Questions? Okay, all right. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up in person or on WebEx?
I have no one signed up or on WebEx for this item.
Okay, does anyone from the audience wish to speak to this item? Okay, we'll conclude public comment.
Move approval.
Have a motion?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item P 42.
Item P 42 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on March 12th, 2025.
So this is the second, Amy Toll, Planning Development Economic Growth. This is the second action or the second resolution that is a companion to the wellhead protection area. So the last one we did was for Hudson Water Works. These were wells that were found that needed to be added to the map for the city of San Antonio. So this is amending the wellhead protection area map to depict the city of San Antonio wells pursuant to Section 808.6(c). This area is located off of Darby Road, and in the city of San Antonio, it is a companion to CPA 24-06. This is the location map depicting where those wells are located. And again, the orange, or I'm sorry, the blue triangles on the east side of the county are the San Antonio wells. And this is the depiction of the wells that were added. This one, you'll notice, the consultant didn't, did not analyze the city of San Antonio wells. However, the 500-foot radius is pursuant to the code requirements. So we ended up adding the protection area around the San Antonio wells in accordance with our code. And with that, same apologies, wrong slide, adopt the resolution, amending the wellhead protection area map to depict the city of San Antonio wells and authorize the chairman to execute the originals. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to help.
All right, is anyone from San Antonio here?
No.
All right, so it'll be to public comment. Anyone here from the public wish to speak to this item?
Mr. Chair, I have no one signed up and no one on WebEx for this item.
To the board.
Move approval.
Second.
Can this be by roll call or not?
No.
No?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item P 43.
Item P 43 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on February 5th, 2025, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Good afternoon, William Vermillion, Planning Development Economic Growth. Item P 43, PDE 257813. This is a zoning amendment. Anclote Town Home MPUD, Lennar Homes LLC, rezoning request from AC Agricultural and AR Agricultural Residential Zoning District to master plan unit development to allow for the maximum development of 190 platted townhomes and associated infrastructure on 46 acres in southwest Pasco County. The future land use of this site is residential six, 190 platted townhomes on 46 acres is roughly 4.3 dwelling units an acre. This is just east of Anclote High School and north of Paul R. Middle School in the Anclote region here, indicated by the red star outlined in yellow. Here's a contextual map showing the location and the subject site in blue. Anclote High School, Anclote Middle School to the south, and a couple MPUDs we have in the area to the south is the Dominion Anclote MPUD, which is 220 multifamily units that uses Sweetbrier Drive, or uses Shoreline Escape to access Sweetbrier Drive as well. The Boca Vista MPUD and the Anclote River Resort MPUD as well. The outline in black running along Sweetbrier Drive is the Anclote Coastal Trail. This project will be accessing that trail based on the multi-use path on the north side of Shoreline Escape, which will be constructed by Dominion Anclote and accessed by this property, allowing pedestrians to access both school sites. To the north of that, this project is surrounded by the Duke Energy Easement, both to the north and to the, to the eastern boundary, is entirely the Duke Energy Easement, which surrounds this property in the area, and is also the site. You can see outlined there, there's a current communications tower, and that, that little jut out is the, the extent of the guidelines. Here's the locational area, again, showing that communication tower as well as the extent of the buffering and the guidelines that currently exist on the property, the current zoning district reflecting AC and AR. The future land use of residential six. Here is the MPUD master plan, again, showing the communication tower, some of those wetlands, and a little bit of the internal street access. But this, this MPUD plan here more illustrates what the applicant's looking to do with the property with the platted townhomes, the, both the emergency access and the boulevard access there, as well as the other pedestrian connections that get the kids to and from school. You can see the, the trails to the north and to the, to the east where Duke actually accesses their power lines. The variation request from 901611 street design and dedication requirements, this is because the applicant cannot connect to, to the north or to the east because of that, those Duke Energy easements, as well as making a full connection to the school because of the recreational facilities in place. With that, it comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions from the Planning Commission as well as Planning Development Economic Growth. I'm here for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay. Would the applicant like to speak to the item?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners Clark Hobby, Hobby and Hobby, PA 109. North Breast Street, Tampa, Florida have been sworn. I'm going to be very brief. The one neighbor that spoke and had questions at Planning Commission is not here today, so I don't know if we'll have anyone speaking or asking questions, but as you just heard from staff, this site is immediately north of the Dominion site that the board approved about a year and a half ago for an affordable project, and changed the comp plan on that site to Res 24. We are working within the Res 6 future land use on our site, which covers most of the area by the schools. Immediately to our east over in the Holiday Lake Estates, that area is Res 9, so it's actually higher than this. We've got a great plan here. We've got really attractive townhouses that Lennar is building with a newer product style that they're, have just reworked their architecture on, and I think it's going to be a great credit to the community. But this is ideally situated next to the Dominion site and right in the middle of all the schools. It should be really great for the area. It's in the West Market area where you guys are encouraging infill just like this, so I think it's a great project and be good for the area. Happy to answer any questions that you or our neighbors may have.
Any questions?
I just have a comment.
Ms. Jaeger.
The one thing about this, these townhomes are at a great price point as well, so it will be affordable for teachers.
The point for us is, so the Dominion will be the under 80 AMI. This will be the first chance at homeownership for people in our area, but again, and I shared some of our newer architectural stuff with Commissioner Jaeger, I have to credit Lennar for stepping up its game about five, 10 years ago, and all the townhouses were great. The newer ones are showing six or seven different architectural finishes on the front, and they look completely different, and a big step up from the old ones, so I think it'll be good for the community here.
Interesting, I was just, in an old Lennar neighborhood wasn't that impressive, so good to hear it's got better things coming.
I'm really glad that they've done that, so, anyway, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right. Is anyone here to speak to this item?
Mr. Chair, I have no one signed up and no one on WebEx for this item.
Okay, to the board. Have a motion?
Second.
Sorry.
Okay. And all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. Item P forty-four.
Item P forty-four was published in the Tampa Bay Times on January eighth, twenty twenty-five, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings. The item was continued from February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, BCC meeting where it was continued to today.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, William Vermillion, Planning Development Economic Growth. Before we get started, I would like to enter into the record some ex parte forms that were distributed past our, our cutoff for civic clerk for approval for, for the commissioners as well as some of the new exhibits that have been developed by the applicant in paper version, so everybody can view these.
All right. Have a motion?
A motion to receive and file.
Yep.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. As he's putting those in, I've had extra, probably an extra meeting with the applicant and the residents, so I think that's in there, but I'm not positive.
This is item forty-four, PDE twenty-five seventy-eight thirty-one, a zoning amendment. Sackelson Hudson MPUD Master Plan Unit Development, DRB Group, a rezoning request from AR Agricultural Residential to MPUD Master Plan Unit Development. Thank you. Here's the, the location map, just south of Hudson Avenue. The, the northernmost boundary of this project to Butts Hudson Avenue and the southernmost boundary directly to Butts Foxfire Drive. This is for the prospective development of sixty-three single-family homes, minimum of sixty feet in width on approximately thirty-four acres with the related associated infrastructure, including the Vision Road Colony. Here is the location map. I'm going to breeze through this a little quicker since we, we've heard this one before and get to the changes for you all, if that's all right. The existing zoning, of course, AR Agricultural, Agricultural Residential, the future land use map, context map. Here is where we first get to some of the changes that have occurred since the, the last meeting. The applicant was kind enough to work with the, the commissioners as well as the, the residents in the area. The first change you'll notice is the, the cul-de-sac to the bottom there. The applicant is no longer proposing an, an access to Foxfire Drive, and this is reflected on the MPUD master plan. We also have added a, a condition of approval twenty-three to, annotate as such, to allow no vehicular access to Foxfire Drive. We've also added in that condition twenty-three that all construction access is to happen from Hudson Avenue. The applicant has also requested, in condition seventeen, to, for a requirement to construct a three hundred and fifteen-foot eastbound turn lane, as well as adding additional buffering requirements along that cul-de-sac there in condition number eight, which is reflected here on the, the binding concept plan that you see that's been updated, which shows that cul-de-sac to the south, as well as those additional buffering requirements in that packet that I just provided. And then finally, a change to the COAs in condition fifty-three. The applicant added in to the disclosure agreement in which the, the sellers would be purchasing a single home, the Florida Right to Farm Act has been added to that disclosure. Another major change between last meeting and today was the ultimate right-of-way needed for Colony Road. Originally, the applicant was asking for one hundred and twenty-four feet, which was the PD and E study, which was approved by the board. However, after that last meeting and over the last month, the applicant has worked to achieve a sixty-foot cross-section instead of that one hundred and twenty-four feet. Here is one of the right-of-way exhibits here, showing that, that sixty feet of, of right-of-way in that typical section is shown there at the bottom. Here is the mobility fee credit exhibit, talking about the right-of-way dedication of the portion in which the applicant isn't constructing. They're constructing that northern portion, as well as the creditable pond along Hudson Avenue.
Could you hang on that for a second?
Absolutely.
So what's the credit for the pond? Like, why, why is that there?
So the, the pond is creditable because it's going to be used to retain, any retention that isn't being created by the development of the sixty-three units or its associated infrastructure, its, its acquire, or it's retaining some of the, the public runoff from both Hudson and then the new Vision Road. That's the only pond that's credible. There's other ponds that aren't shown, but this is the only credible pond.
I just have a question. Do you have a copy of the, the conditions?
I do. I have a, I have one redlined version myself. I didn't want to provide it because I know that things are subject to change here, and I was hoping to provide those changes to you guys all at once, once we had a consolidated vision moving forward after today.
Oh, I think Barbara has it.
You're the best.
Can we have a motion to receive and file?
Motion to receive and file.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Perfect. And, and just to, to go back to the pond, it's, it's roughly a hundred and nine thousand dollars in mobility fee credits that, that was agreed to between county staff and the applicant for that point seven acre pond and the point eight seven acres of right-of-way. This exhibit four is the phase one of Colony Road Extension, which is going to be developed by this MPUD from the, from Hudson Avenue south to the project entrance at the aforementioned sixty-feet typical, shown again below. This is illustrative of the, of the talks that we had with the neighboring Palm Wind MPUD. In order to change this roadway alignment, staff and the applicant worked to, to shift this roadway alignment further east, which included roughly point oh eight acres of the current Palm Wind property and a tract that they had currently platted that wasn't being used for residential lot. This exhibit here highlights that point zero eight acres from shifting that roadway alignment over. Here is a right-of-way and acquisition visual showings in red there is that, that Taylor Morrison point oh eight acres of shifting that road over. In hatched orange is that thirty-three foot public access right-of-way easement, as well as parcels needed to be acquired on the east side of the road outside of that public access easement owned by the Naturalist Religious Society, and then two individuals in purple. There are some variation requests with this project, the first being from nine oh one sixty eleven, street design and dedication requirements. In lieu of the western vehicular connection, the applicant has prioritized pedestrian mobility and safety in their design and provided those additional pedestrian connections, both on the north along Colony Road to the, to the parcel there that would, will now be at the corner of Hudson and Colony, as well as to the parcel to the west through the corner lots. And the, the second variation is, is from that BCC PD and E study, of course, taking it originally from one hundred and sixty feet to one twenty-four, but now down to sixty feet to accommodate the, the ultimate build-out that the BCC feels is appropriate and that PD and E staff feels is appropriate. With that, that comes to you with a recommendation of approval from Planning Commission and from Planning Development Economic Growth staff. I'm here for any questions.
Any other questions for staff? So let me ask you a couple of questions. If you would go back to the, one of the maps.
Will you tell me when to stop? Which, which, I don't know which one you prefer.
Go, go to the one that, you kind of showed the right-of-way, et cetera. Probably one more, two more, right there. That's good.
Perfect.
Okay. So I want, I want the board just keep an eye. So the development coming in, instead of having the access on Foxfire, one of the things I was looking at was, at Foxfire, as it hits Colony, it's a dangerous curve that's there. Lots of accidents. When Foxfire goes out to Peachtree, it connects to another right turn. It's hard. That's the connection that then gets to Hudson Avenue. The reason I was pushing staff not to have the connection to Foxfire was just because of so much traffic so close to the intersection. It bothered me as well as the residents. When I look at the roadway that's going to come through their property, I will say I have a hard time saying to them why they're not building it because they don't need it to connect. They have it. But if you look right to the right, it over in Palm Winds, if you see all the development right there, they have set themselves up to connect up to the north, and they did a very good job connecting to the north. Their other connection going to the south connects over to the side of another roadway. But a lot of those people eventually going to want to connect over here, and I think it's better for traffic flow if we move that forward as opposed to not. So as you can see with the impact fee on the last page of the last thing that Barbara just handed us, it shows the mobility fees don't cover near enough to build the road. And I'll have staff, maybe if they could comment, how many impact fees are on Palm Wind and how many on Brighton Bay down below that are coming into the area?
Absolutely. I can, I don't know that number off the top of my head, but I can certainly get it.
I know Terry and Nick were supposed to be looking, working at that, so. I don't know if they have that answer.
The cost to connect Colony all the way through?
To connect all the way through.
Right.
So is Terry here, or as I see Nick Uren in the back? Did anyone get those numbers to find out what, what was going to be collected impact
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Nick Uren, county engineer. Wanted to mention that, as Commissioner Mariano and I had discussed this morning, the way we do development of our capital program is by forecasting impact fees, rather mobility fees, that will be collected within each of our three zones over the five-year period, and then allocating them to projects that are warranted for construction based on how busy the roads are. And so while I can't answer your specific question regarding how much will they generate and how much will it cost to build Colony Road from Hudson to State Road fifty-two at this point in time, we're, we're working on those answers as we speak. What I can say is that we have a plan to consume, to build roads within zone one with the mobility fees that we're anticipating to collect. So the idea is, again, on a zone level, we collect fees and then select projects for board approval as part of your annual capital budget. We do not do small area planning where we say these mobility fees from this project should be used to build this road that is right next door to them, unless that road is essential for access to the property, and then we work out relationships with them for mobility fee credits. So unfortunately, I, I don't have a specific answer to you, other than to say it would cost more than they are generating in mobility fees, and we have a plan to spend all of the predicted mobility fees that we intend to receive, or hope to receive in this zone in the next five years.
All right. So on the, on the last page of the sheet that we're handing, I'll hand it to you if you want to see it, it shows that the development cost per line if it was two thousand, total development cost, and I think it's just building the section that's being shown right there. I'm just, at this point, talking to that connection right there to what it would cost, and it's got a difference of, in excess of the mobility fees, two point one million. So I, I, I thought you would get it from me, but I did ask Terry to get it too, so if Terry can come up with those numbers to what those impact fees will be generated between this project and next project, we'll continue more with the conversation. But I think, I expect that Terry had that with me for, for right now.
Question.
Commissioner Oakley.
Yeah. When you use those impact fees, you know, in that, it's in that zone or that area, they're going to be used. And from other projects, well, monies will come to be used in that same area.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. Impact, mobility fees. Mobility fees is what, is the term that we ought to use in here in Pasco. The mobility fees are paid upon issuance of COs or prior to issuance of COs for development. That money gets aggregated together within the entire western zone, which is zone one in our mobility fee system. And then we use that money for capital projects to create capacity, add travel lanes for cars on projects within, anywhere within that zone. So again, the zone is a large zone. It goes from Pinellas all the way to Hernando Gulf of Mexico to, and I'm going to-
Gulf of where?
Gulf of America.
Well said. You know, the world changes fast. And if you don't stop to look around every once in a while, you're going to miss it. Yes, from the Gulf, to, to the, and I don't have the eastern border in my head, I apologize. But, but we, we are supposed to allocate those resources to capital projects within that entire zone. And it's a larger area than just the, the immediate area surrounding these two developments.
There'll be other projects that'll be putting money in that same pool.
That's right. In fact, one of the big projects I know we are intending to use mobility fees for in zone one is the widening of DeCubus Avenue, DeCubus Road, I'm sorry, from Little Road over to town center, just south of Ridge. So that, that's one of the projects that we would have to find other resources to fund if we were to allocate mobility fees to this, to this corridor instead.
Okay. All right. I see Terry's behind you, so, Terry?
Thank you, Nick. Victorio Spito's Planning Development Economic Growth. So the calculation of mobility fees has a lot of variables built into it depending on the type of product that ultimately gets picked in terms of the square footage of a house, for example, that might get selected by a buyer or, or the builder. Nevertheless, these are just kind of back a napkin, but this, this Sackelson MPUD and the Palm Winds MPUD are in a rural standard mobility fee assessment district. And just taking a one thousand five hundred to twenty-five hundred square foot single-family home as our baseline, for three hundred and nineteen units in Palm Wind, it's about three point five million dollars in mobility fees. And again, that's, that's variable, that can change. Sure. But, and then back a napkin on Sackelson, you're looking at, again, for a one five, one thousand five hundred square foot to twenty-five hundred square foot single-family home, about seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. But again, that's variable, and that can definitely change based on the product that they end up building on the various lots.
Okay. And what about Brighton Bay on the, Brighton Bay, those of you who don't know, it's right at, just above State Road fifty, right, right on Colony, right below this project. What would that be?
Oh, you did the calculation. Okay. That was about a hundred and sixty-two units, so about one point seven million.
Okay.
She was following the same methodology that I-
So Sackelson would be seven hundred and the others about five point two million. And the reason, reason I bring that up, I'm not looking even if we, if we can't build the whole road, I will say that this development coupled with the other two, it would do a lot for the area to have that flow going up, because that flow is coming up, especially from Brighton Bay down below. It's coming right up that way to go out, and you don't want them taking that turn every time on Foxfire, and then the turning back up at Peachtree. You're just looking for trouble. This would streamline it, and we've made this where it's a vision road. If ever the time the vision to, to complete, it would be right now. Even if you're just making the connection, it might build the whole road out, which would need to be down, down the road. So to me, if you do this as well, it might make these other things sell better, which will generate more money for the area anyway.
I, I have one comment. If you could pull up fifty-two and Colony. So when I was meeting with the citizens, residents, they, one of the things they were worried about was people are making a left onto Shadow Ridge Boulevard and cutting through that little building with the, with the parking area. So I reached out to FDOT to see, you know, if there's been a study or where they're at, to see if we can get a light on Colony and fifty-two. So I'm just waiting to hear back on that. But again, if that road connects, that would be, that would be great.
Definitely would help.
So.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for staff? All right. For the applicant?
See that building, see they're cutting through that parking lot?
I was, I was going to ask, finally get an update today at the MPO meeting, which didn't happen.
Well, there's your update.
Barbara Willhite, sixty-three twenty-seven Graham Boulevard, Newport Ritchie, for the applicant. Your staff too has done that research, coming, about fifty-two and Colony coming out of Planning Commission. The information your staff received is that they have sixty percent design done for redoing those intersections. And then- intersections, and that they will, it's designed for a full median, so it can be signalized if there's enough development. So, they're, I'm glad you're reaching out because it's happening right now, 52 and Colony.
By the way, as you get started, Barbara, I just want people to know that, you know, sometimes it's tough to make things happen, tough to get meetings with folks, et cetera, but I would say, Barbara, you and the applicant were fantastic when it came to trying to meet before this meeting was going to happen. They came at 5:30 on, was it a Thursday or Friday night, Thursday night, with the residents where they could all meet, talk, and it was great dialogue, which led to a lot of these changes in the discussion we're talking about. So, thank you for that.
You're welcome. It was a very productive meeting, and we did a lot of things I haven't seen done in MPUDs for a while. So, I kind of want to show off what we came up with that will make a difference when we develop this project. One of the things that was, we heard over and over is no access to Foxfire. So, as you've seen from Williams' presentation, a cul-de-sac's been added to the MPD plan, the binding concept plan, and we have a new condition that talks about no vehicular access to, from the project in Foxfire Drive. We actually have language that goes on the plat to make sure. One of the things the residents said to us is, in that meeting, was like, well, we don't believe you. And not they don't believe me, but they don't believe that things won't change over time. So, it's actually going to be platted in a manner that that access won't be able to be granted in the future. So, it's a sure thing. So, that's what Condition 23 that we added that you can kind of see that we presented there. I was told that I have to request verbally because this meeting happened last Thursday. So, trying to update this paperwork and get all these technical things done has been, you know, a bunch of work, but it's worth it. I have to request the variation to not have that connection, so I added that to my third bullet there. So, if that, you're so inclined to agree that a cul-de-sac is better, then you just agree that then staff can update the paperwork to include the variation in my bullet there. You've seen this from Williams' presentation. All construct, this was Commissioner Mariano's idea, all construction traffic shall access from Hudson Avenue and a requirement for temporary turn lanes. So, saying there's going to be no construction traffic to or from Foxfire. And then also, when we get up to Hudson, where Colony joins Hudson, where our access will be, making sure that we front turn lanes, temporary turn lanes, so our construction vehicles will be able to get off the road, whether it's their turning left, they'll have a dedicated left that they can get in so the travel lanes keep moving, and the same thing with the right. And then Condition says we have to do that before we can bring any construction equipment onsite and start construction. Again, have not seen that in a very long time, so I think that's a good addition. We're not required by traffic warrants to do an eastbound right turn lane on Colony. By traffic warrants, we're only required to do a left turn in, but at the request of the District Commissioner, he'd asked us to voluntarily add a right turn lane, so we'll have a permanent right turn lane as well. And that's the condition that you've seen added up here. Lot of discussion with the neighbors. What do our buffers look like, for example, on our southern Foxfire boundary? We've added a specific landscape buffer there and a specific buffer detail that exceeds the code. We went all the way around our property and exceeded the code with requirement, doing buffering, a minimum of 15. To our east, where one of the neighbors that attended, we'll be doing a 20-foot buffer there. Our plan is binding, so for our neighbor that's to our south and to our east, she's got a pond to her north, and that's, will be a pond. So, there will be no adjacency there. This, again, is the detail for the Foxfire buffer that says exactly what we have to do, what size they have to be, pretty detailed requirement there. Again, binding, it's on a binding plan. A lot of, this is a, I haven't seen a disclosure like this. Again, Commissioner Mariano's idea to have a disclosure to all of our residents that we do have neighbors that have agricultural pursuits, and discussion of, actually, it was Commissioner, Finance Commissioner Moody's idea to add the Florida Right to Farm Act, that their properties are protected by that. So, if they, neighbors in our project call the county, the county will be able to tell them, look, you had a disclosure, you know that you have neighbors that have agricultural pursuits. This is the conversation that the Commissioner was having regarding the properties that are needed. So, I included this information. This is what the county would need to do to take Foxfire, excuse me, to take Colony all the way to Foxfire. So, that's what's listed here. Couple different property owners, three different property owners the county would work with, as well as, there's some easements they would need to do, the board would need to do a resolution to use those easements as a common law dedication per your county attorney's office. You've seen, this is, this is the, shows those properties. And I just want to mention one thing. This is the alignment that the county set, came up with. We came up with it together. We, our team provided facts and research, and the county team took the research and said, okay, we'd like to, we'd like to go 60 feet in this alignment. But when I did the MPUD, not knowing exactly how you want to finish this road getting down to Foxfire, we put 60 feet at our southern boundary, our southeastern boundary. So, whether you ultimately go this way or you go another way to make that connection, I want you to have the right of way regardless. And that extra right of way between what this, what it would have been, which is basically nothing at our southeast corner, and now what we're going to give is 60 feet, we did not seek any credits for. So, that was just a conveyance to try to let you guys have your options, and we didn't do something to zone our property in a manner that you don't, if we're closed, you doing it one way versus another way. And then you've seen this, which is the cost, not including the right of way that need to be acquired, but these are the costs of getting Colony from our access down to Foxfire. You can see the cost there. And that is what we have. Just remind you, you know, this is a RES3 land use. We obviously went through all this before. RES3 land use allows 102 units. We're proposing 63. Current zoning is 34. So, it's well below the density that was envisioned for this area, and which our neighbor over at Palm Wind did do a higher density, more in line with their comp plan versus this one, which I think complements because now we have a product, a community that's going to have the larger step-up homes in this area. And that is what I have. I'm available for questions. I have my team here.
I've got two comments, and something that we didn't talk about, but reading the full agenda item. Conditions on 52 and 53. I read it, disclosure statement regarding the future construction of Hudson Ave and Colony Road shall be included in all sales contracts or residential sales with the MPUD. This disclosure shall include the roadway's number of lanes and construction if applicable. I'm just wondering why the if applicable is in there.
Sounds like a good change.
We can delete the if applicable?
It may be because if, if it was already built by the time they sold the lots, then it wouldn't be applicable anymore, but-
That would be it? Okay. Okay.
But we're fine with that change.
I'll leave it to the county attorney. Should you just leave it in then?
Yeah, I think-
Okay. All right, that's good.
That gives them the, they can stop it at some point in time when-
Okay.
When that's constructed.
Then on Condition 53, it talks about disclosure with everybody. And then, at the very end, the last sentence that's in there, it says, "This disclosure obligation will cease if all the land proximate to the MPUD has been rezoned to zoning, to a zoning district that does not allow for commercial farming and agricultural activities, general farming pursuits, and the maintaining of livestock." Now, the definition of proximate, if it's right next door, that's one thing. But part of the reason that we're trying to like, be concerned of this whole area all the way out to Peachtree is it's all rural. So, it may not be right next to the property, but there's still the effects that could happen for the next lot over, even if you bought the bordering land to go further. So, are you okay if we get rid of that?
Actually, Mr. Goldstein-
So, my concern with getting rid of it completely is we didn't want to prohibit the neighboring property owners from rezoning their property to something other than ag. The way it was worded, we didn't want to lock them in and say they could never get a rezoning in the future, and they had to permanently stay ag. So, that's the purpose for the language. But if you're concerned with the word proximate, we can change that word if that's the concern.
Well, I thought that the way this was written, more the protection was more to let the people know that we're buying that there's agriculture next door. If they rezone, so be it. But I'm just dealing with this development.
But if they rezone to high-density residential, there would be no reason to continue to have that disclosure.
So, back to the word proximate. Proximate would be where?
We can say nearby, if that, proximate or nearby, or you want to say within half a mile. I mean, I don't know what your, how far to the radius you want them to disclose to.
I mean, not fully looking at it. I mean, down to the south is also out to the west. It's a lot of agriculture, even to the other side, has been developed by Palm Winds the other side. So, it can go all the way out to even Peachtree, whatever. But, again, we're just trying to let the people know that are coming in here, that there's agriculture going on next door, and just kind of letting them know that.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if you want to expand proximate to be some set distance, we can just put in parentheses after proximate, we could just say within a half a mile, within a mile, whatever it is that you want.
Our notice is one out 500 feet.
Yeah, if you want to say 500 feet.
Yeah, 500 feet doesn't cover.
We can set a specific distance if that's a concern.
Okay. All right.
Whatever there.
Maybe staff, while we continue this conversation, go to more commentary, find out how far it is to Peachtree, and then take me the same distance, I guess, make a circular route from that. Okay. All right. Any questions, any other questions for staff? No? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before you call for public comment, Terry, did you have ex parte that you wanted to put in the record for this one? Or will?
He did put in some ex partes.
At the start.
I was told that there was additional clarification that need to be done on behalf of the clerk's office.
I, there was one submitted to our office, Megan?
It was for P-43.
Oh, it was for P-43?
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
No worries.
For this, for this one. That's what I thought.
So, does that cover P-43 then?
If. We were, we were, we wanted to make sure that- Commissioners had indicated they had had meetings, that that had gotten into the record. That was-
That was for P-44, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. County Attorney?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
All right. So, because we've made changes, we're going to allow public comment again. So, do we have a sign up?
We do. I have 10 citizens who have signed up. I'll take them in order. I'll say three at a time so that you know when you're, when you're, when you'll be up next. The first I have is Brooke Huber, followed by Kim Santoro, followed by Rivas Johns. Brooke, please come up to the podium. You'll state your name and address for the record, and then let us know if you've been sworn.
My name is Brooke Huber. I live at 11927 Foxfire Drive. I have been sworn in. I live on the corner of the dirt road for Foxfire and Colony, right off the dirt road, the first house on the left. The biggest concern for our family, honestly, is well water. We're on the well. We back right up to it. Our front yard's going to be the new developed Colony Road. Our backyard's going to be these new homes, and we're concerned about the quality of our well water, as well as how many people do drive on that very dangerous turn. There's constantly accidents that come in. One of them knocked over a power line recently, so it's a little chaotic there. And how many people are going to be driving down that road regardless, and the fact that we also have to do the U-turn, and the U-turn to get into Colony Road is taking longer and longer every, like, month, I would say. So, we would really like that to be considered because I do have a three-year-old, we have chickens, we have dogs, we have me and my husband. We want to make sure we're drinking clean water and not contaminated in any way. I appreciate your guys' time. I don't really know how to end, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have Kim Santoro, followed by Rivas Johns, followed by Marcia Kazmaric. Hopefully, they did a good job on that.
Mr. Chairman and Board, thank you for your time. This is kind of a general for Hudson-
Ms. Santoro, I need your name and address-
Oh, I'm sorry.
-for the record, and then if you state, if you've been sworn.
Kim Santoro, 9120 Brush Lane in Hudson. And yes, I have been sworn.
Thank you.
We all purchased our homes for the freedom and space that our properties and surrounding neighborhoods provide. I know myself and my family and friends are very invested in finding balance in the inevitable growth within the appropriate areas. I've been in the position that the woman in front of me has been in before with a proposed increase across the street. My neighbors and I shared our concerns in, during all the rezoning requests, and the builder ended up changing the request from a larger quantity of homes to a less quantity of homes in an undesirable layout. While we continued to voice our concerns over that layout, it ultimately ended up being sold to one home and maintained the status of our current zoning. I'm asking you to take our concerns within all of these communities very seriously with respect. I have serious concerns regarding the disruption of our native flora and fauna in all of our area, the displacement of wildlife and their safety, the numbers of dead and dying that we're seeing along the roadways on a daily basis, the declines in some of our wildlife. What will those mitigation solutions be? What are the mitigating solutions for tortoises and burrows? We have the current construction that's already going on there that is moving, moving our wildlife, and then this will add to that. The increase in traffic on the two-lane road of Hudson Ave, which is already getting more and more congested with construction that is already occurring in addition to what is coming up. I do understand that growth is inevitable, but please consider those of us most affected within that vicinity. Thank you.
Okay. Rivas Johns, followed by Marcia Kazmaric, followed by Clinton Wind.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Rivas Johns, 11934 Foxfire Drive, representing Team Foxfire.
And have you been sworn?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Had a lot to say today, but one of the things was, I, I thought originally that commissioners may have forgot who they represent, you know? It seems like a lot of the times in the last few meetings I've been to is, they're more representing to the builder and their attorneys than the public. And Jack and a few of the other people have stepped forward on this, and I think pushed, pushed a lot of things that were important forward. And even though I don't agree with the building, and even though I don't agree with, you know, I don't understand why this has to be built. You've got plenty of building around it. It's just going to affect so much. It's, I just, I don't agree with it, but I understand that things happen. The one thing I do want to bring up is, what is very important to me, is wildlife. I've, Florida used to have a, what they called a black wolf. And it was done probably 100 years ago since anybody has even mentioned or seen it. And here recently, we have caught what we think on video as a black wolf. And if anybody wants to see it, some of you have seen it. I'm just working with FWC right now. From what I understand, there is other sightings in Pasco County, and they're not 100% sure what it is. They know it's not a fox, and they're not 100% sure that it's a coyote. So, they are doing the research on it, and that's something to me that I think should really, really be looked over and paid attention to because, you know, if this is something that was supposed to be extinct 100 years ago, I think we owe it to them to at least step back and look it over and see what it is. And as far as the road, we have no idea of when that road would go through if he was to build this.
We're working on details.
All right. You know, we don't have any idea of, you know, one year, two years, five years. I understand they said at least five years because we don't have the funding for it. How long is it going to take to do the development? You know, there's a lot to think about. And we have a development down the road that has stood still now for close to a year. What's going to happen with this development if it does or doesn't start? You know, when is it going to start? When is it going to finish? And what does that do to our property values? I appreciate it. Thank you guys very much, and have a great day.
Thank you. Marcia Kazmaric. Okay. Followed by Clinton Wind, followed by John Fish. Followed by Clinton Nguyen, followed by John Fish.
Good afternoon, Marcia Kazmaric, 11908 Foxfire Drive, and yes, I was sworn in. I know, like Rivas said, that we had a meeting, it, it did go well. I still don't understand how a developer can come into a neighborhood and change the zoning, although a friend of mine's told me an explanation, but nobody else has been able to. As I don't want to lose my ag. And even though I've got a feeling I'm going to not lose mine, but I'm going to have a subdivision, a high-end subdivision pushed in on me, I am going to say, I don't, I know our road is not substan, it is substandard, it is nowhere near standard. It was an experimental road. Foxfire, and I believe also Peachtree, because they were all dirt lime rock roads when I moved in. And I understand the man over here in the third seat down said that there's not enough money that's going to be developed from this to build roads, you know, and the money's already being, I want to use the word diverted, to another area. Was the money counted that's supposed to be coming in right off of Hudson Avenue? There's, I believe, over 300 homes, and I don't know the name of it, I just know it's across the street from the Girl Scout camp. I think it's being built by Black something, a developer. But is those numbers being added in? Because they're going to cut through off of Hudson Avenue, and it's only common sense that makes this. They're going to come in, turn down Peachtree, just like everybody else does to hit 52. They're smarter to do that than they are to go all the way down to Hicks Road to turn on 52, to come through several more lights, which is an extra 15 minutes just to get where Colony Road is. So the traffic is, that, that's a guarantee. I, I, if I have to suck up and allow zoning to be done in my neighborhood, I'm not trying to be mean, but I think somebody else needs to kind of suck it up and make this road happen to get it off of our not-standard road. And I think that's fair. I don't get everything I want, I don't think everybody else should either. I bought there, I own. I've had ag for 25 years, I have bought steers from Mr. Oakley. I've driven out to Date City, I've bought numerous steers, and I believe I bought a heifer. I mean, I am ag. Do I have scales here? No. The county's nice enough to let me to load my trailer, load one animal, go over to the county dump, weigh the animal, it's a hassle. Weigh the animal, come back, unload the animal, go back and weigh my trailer, it's crazy. But you know what? It works. So there are ways, but like I said, I'm ag, I don't want to lose that number. And I know my time's up, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have Clinton Nguyen, followed by John Fish, followed by Jeremy, and I think it's
We were under the misconception, we thought we had five minutes each because of our organization, so Team Foxfire. Clinton Nguyen, 12709 Nguyen Lane, and I have been sworn in.
You'd only have, you'd only have one that had five minutes if you had, if you were representing a group.
Well, the next time we vote, we're going to vote for people to give us five minutes I like the tone here today, so I appreciate that. We've also all spent a lot of time together, probably more than some of us even like, but that's what a community is, right? This is where the voters and the people that are elected into office interact with the residents, so I, I want to thank you for that, okay? I did not enjoy my drive to Date City, Commissioner Oakley. Good afternoon, elected officials. We are back to discuss the Sackelson proposed development. Like I said, I would like to thank you for meeting us today and meeting us for this week. One commissioner refused to meet with us, and they're not here. This is where he proposed a single-family dwelling of 34.24 acres. Most importantly, the showman parcel, which you guys have addressed, would connect to Foxfire. You know, we met with Barbara Willhite, we met with the builders, we appreciate that. Commissioner Mariano, you gave us three hours. You even drove out and saw the Brighton Park disaster, where we have a drain to nowhere. Foxfire, like you said, I don't want to keep beating a dead horse here, but like I said, we know Foxfire's an issue, we know Colony Road and 52's an issue, we know people are cutting through Shadow Ridge. We know the general store, I was hoping he was here today, you know, he would have some play in this, because when you're turning onto Colony, onto 52 from Colony, you don't know if they're pulling into the gas station. There's no turn lanes, there's no deceleration lane off of 52 onto Colony. And I don't want to see another disaster. I don't want to see another fatality, because it's, you know, it's just, we're losing people every day in our county. I am proposing, hold on to your hat, Finance Department, I'm proposing the mobility fees for a 10-mile radius to be isolated from the point of the Sackelson development out. So that means Shady Hills Development, everyone, we get to share this money, okay? The Blackwell one on Hudson Avenue, across from the Girl Scout camp. We got a new development that's being cleared, no one's even talked about that, across from Lakeside. We know the connections, I think, or I know, that we want to protect Bridget. It's important, and the other young lady was here, but we need to connect the Colony Road down to behind Bridget's house. And we need to connect it to Sharon, and we need to connect it to Palm Wind. We all agreed the last time Palm Wind was a disaster, it, it made the other development hold up for 90 days, because they had to buy her that parcel, which was supposed to be an emergency exit, but they dumped it on Fair Winds. And then the attorney, Ms. Willhite, she said this can be a binding contract. Well, who's going to bind it? Who's going to sign it? Because ever since that exit did not come through on Fair Winds as emergency exit, I don't trust anybody. Okay? I'm just going to be honest with you. I feel like I was duped by Commissioner Starkey, because it changed. And, and my, my ag land, which we've had since, I keep telling you, since 53, and I'm a, I'm very, very honored to be able to carry on the family tradition there, but that really, really messed up Fair Winds. I had wished the other lady was here today, I saw her with her daughter waiting for the school bus. She actually got her school bus stop moved closer, so she didn't have to walk to Colony and 52 and stand in the dark. So again, sidewalks, get ADA compliant, clean up that Brighton Park, protect the residents on Foxfire, get that Colony Road extension, and thank you for your time. Thank you.
We have John Fish, followed by Jeremy Riffey, followed by Kathy Julian.
My name is John Fish, I live at 11316 Black Walnut Street. I'm only affected by the Colony Road stuff. Oh, I've been sworn in.
Thank you, thank you.
So, most of my concerns have been talked about already. My particular one is the well water. With all the construction that has been going on, I've seen my quality of water change already. That's from Hudson Avenue all the way around. The wildlife is another thing. On the proposed property to be developed, it is close to the power line easement, that's where all the animals go through. Within the last three months, I've seen one dead deer close to where, where the power lines hit Foxfire. When I came here to my property 40 years ago, there was abundance of animals. I had rabbits on my property, fox squirrels, foxes, owls, everything. They're all disappeared. Used to watch a bobcat run up and down, it's gone. Anyways, my main concern is Colony Road. I don't know how, I, I mean, you, you said that the roadway would come in off of Hudson Avenue, but I don't know how the utilities would get there. Nothing's been spoke of that. Water, sewer, they're going to have to be fed by that. All the neighbors have got wells and septic tanks. The other question is, is they bring that water and sewer down Colony to connect up, how are they going to get in there? And will we have to connect up because it's there and because of the cost of bringing it up there? Is it going to affect our taxes on our property? Is it going to affect the designation of our land? I mean, I live on an agricultural piece of land now, I've raised chickens, I've raised hogs. My neighbors are raising chickens. We even had a, a woman that had animals that were rescued, come in and rehabbed and released. We have a school bus that runs down through there, and like they were saying, the experimental road starts at Fair Winds and goes all the way out to Hudson Avenue. So that would all have to be changed out. How long would that take? How long would we be disrupted? And Brighton Park, they've added so much sand and dirt to that property that they've raised it up above Colony Road, and when Colony Road was paved, that was raised up above the properties. I'm a little worried about some of the flooding that might go on. I know when they paved Black Walnut Street, they raised my road 16 to 18 inches, and that caused water to come on my property and erosion, and I don't know if this has been in consideration. These are some of the concerns that I had. I mean.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Please go flat.
All right, Jeremy Riffey, followed by Kathy Julian, followed by Bridget Erickson.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
My name is Jeremy Riffey, I've been sworn in, I'm at 1346 White Walnut Street. I have a lot to say, before you start my timer, I have a lot to say, so it's going to go pretty quick to get it in the, in the timeline, so please forgive me for that. Y'all ready? We the people let county commissioners to represent us, us the people. We do this so they can represent our best interests when we cannot be present. My vote put each one of you here today, however, we feel we're not being represented in a manner that represents what we want. We are asking one of you to hear our, every one of you to hear our petitions. We're clearly objected to further leveling of trees to keep our area healthy, quiet, and safe. Commissioners, if I say this to you, values, integrity, we work honestly and fairly with the public, each, each other, compassion. We are empathetic to the circumstances and needs of our customers and teammates. Teamwork, we develop and strengthen relationships with our stakeholders, as we share talents and resources, achieve common goals. We would all agree that that's why we got into the public service, to help all. We have quietly watched as car washes filled our communities, we have seen massive lots that are housed, that once housed deer and turkey now will be cleared for numerous storage facilities. We have seen head shops replace empty banks, we all do it while breathing in increased levels of pollutants. The citizens in this room and at home watching ask the question, will I be represented fairly in this? How about the young lady worrying about possible imminent domain and her losing her house? Wildlife is diminishing, my yard is full of everything that's lost its home. Does anyone know how many species there are either threatened or endangered in the state of Florida? 13 fish, four amphibians, 20 reptiles, 32 birds, 28 mammals, 36 invertebrates. This is a total of 134 species, how many of these are on the land that we blindly bulldoze? Last time Barbara confidently told me no gopher tortoises were harmed during the bulldozing and concrete pouring. Where's our proof? Where's the archaeological survey, including arrowheads that may be on these lands? The only reason I saw the public notices is because I stopped to pick up litter. Such a big decision, such a small sign. We need a wildlife quarter. All of Pasco's neighborhoods become racetracks, they have become new normal traffic patterns, gated communities that are no longer private. These are all now shortcuts. The new traffic is dangerous and scary, little people lost their lives while waiting their bus to go to and from school. Imagine that call, your loved one died at the bus stop. Fire rescues, no more responses, emergencies are hindered due to overwhelming traffic influxes that overwhelm the outdated infrastructure. Sheriff's Office also just struggles with this as well, when they need to get to and from calls for our citizens of Pasco County. I feel safe living in Pasco because of our deputies. Thank you, guys, we appreciate it. He's back there watching, no of us now. Traffic accidents are increasing at an alarming rate, our auto insurance companies tell us it will continue to increase due to population density. This is how our premiums are formulated. I will say this standing before you today, I feel like I am asking for basic rights of life. I have anxiety if I were standing before a federal court judge pleading for one's life, and yet I only have 180 seconds to ask for it. I feel like I am a stakeholder, I really hope I am. I live here, I go to church here, I like holding doors, so we may have met. May I keep my way of living? Can my children's baby witness nature the way we have it now? Starkey Park is beautiful, so is my backyard. Please, can I keep it? The other people in this, on this list here could not make it, I speak for them. How about some of that integrity, compassion, and teamwork we all talked about? It's been difficult knowing that some of us get unlimited time and consultation time.
Thank you, sir.
Kathy Julian, followed by Bridget Erickson, followed by Von Dennisia Harris? Sorry about that.
Hi, my name is Kathy Julian, I live at 10232 Worthy Lamb Way, and I was sworn in. I don't live directly in this area that we're discussing today, but I do, it's between my house and my office, so I drive by there every day, and when I saw that sign pop up, all I could think was Foxfire, when it makes those two 90-degree turns, is going to be a nightmare. I mean, I've probably almost been hit there three or four times. My friend's car was totaled pulling out of that neighborhood, crossing 52. So we do need a stoplight at that area, because she could have been killed. I was actually asked by her to come and read a statement, because she couldn't be here today, but she lives by the other area that's been cleared for a new development. One night when I was dropping her off, I know Mr. Mariana was actually there witnessing what was happening. Their house has cracked because of the development that's happened. Apparently it's messed up the water tables, I don't understand that, I'm an accountant, not a engineer. But it's not really fair, the other thing that's not really fair is, this new neighborhood is coming in, you're putting in 60 houses, and you're only charging them $600,000, and it's going to cost 2.8 to put the road in to service them. That's not fair. We as taxpayers should not be paying. If those people want houses there, great. If they have the right to do it, great, but they should be paying for the infrastructure that's required. We should be raising our impact fees. I don't know why we don't. Why do we allow all of this construction to happen, and then the $2.1 million falls back on the taxpayers? Our taxes are high, I pay $7,000 a year for my house, $5,000 for my office. I mean, that's a lot of money. You never own property, because you pay $7,000 a year in property tax on property that you've already paid off. It's just not fair. And, you know, you guys, I know that Jack works for us, because I have reached out to him on numerous occasions, and he has driven across the county to go look at something, because somebody reached out to me and said, hey, I don't know what to do about this. So I reached out to Jack, and he was nice enough on a weekend to go check out what was happening with the flooding on the other side of the county. We've got so many issues in this county with flooding, how do we put in all this new development? How do we know this new development isn't going to flood? The people that are currently living there, do we care if these people that are living there, if their properties become flooded because we put in new construction? It seems like in a lot of cases, they don't care. And that is very disheartening, as a citizen of this county. You know, because all these people here, they have beautiful property, I drive by it every day, and they're nice. I mean, I would love to live out there, I don't, I'm not blessed to, but their property should not be damaged or flooded, because we've let new construction in. And I, the other thing that I don't believe for a second is where that cul-de-sac is that's right by Foxfire. What's the guarantee that that's not, that a road is not put through to Foxfire? What is the guarantee on that? Who is guaranteeing that there won't be a road put through to Foxfire? Foxfire can't handle the traffic now, it definitely won't be able to handle it then. Thank you.
We've got Bridget Erickson, followed by Von Dennisia Harris?
Good afternoon, my name is Bridget Erickson, I live at 11931 Foxfire Drive. I'm going to make this quick, so we have three minutes. First thing I'd like to talk about is spot zoning.
Ms. Erickson, were you, I'm sorry.
Pardon?
Hold on just a moment, were you sworn in?
Yes, I was.
All right, go ahead.
Spot zoning is where a small area is rezoned for use inconsistent with the surrounding area, as it can benefit a developer at the expense of the community and the property owners. We are not developers, we're agriculture. This is what's going on here. Spot zoning involves changing the zoning of a small parcel of land to allow use that differs significantly from the surrounding areas, often for the benefit of a specific property owner or developer. It disrupts the community plan. Spot zoning is for, is changing the intended character of a neighborhood, that's what's going on. Special favors, it can be seen as giving special treatment to a developer or a property owner, potentially leading to unfairness or corruption. It has a negative impact on the neighbors. Changing a zoning can negatively impact our neighboring property, property values, traffic, and the overall quality of our life. Legitimate public purchases. Zoning changes, including spot zoning, must generally serve a legitimate public purpose, such as promoting health, safety, or welfare. This project does none of the three. If spot zoning is deemed arbitrary or not in the public interest, it may be struck down as a violation. If spot zoning is deemed arbitrary or not in the public interest, it may be struck down as a violation of the process. Example, you're trying to change from agriculture to residential. That's spot zoning. Water and soil pollution. These are all articles, World Health Organization. Construction activities are a significant source of air pollution, primarily due to dust emissions from machinery and the use of harmful chemicals and materials. These pollutants can negatively impact human health and the environment. Dust, chemicals, asbestos, green light gas emissions, particulate matter, other pollutions. One thing, conduct construction sentiment, the greatest threat to water quality. That's my neighbor talking about the well. She's my neighbor. Washington stormwater. Oil and grease, construction machinery and equipment can release oil and grease, contributing to water pollution and posing risk to aquatic life. Air pollution. The one thing I wanted to get out of this article is, since we're so pressed for time, the main construction contaminants that spread around by wind, particulate matter with a diameter less than ten microns generating polluted dust. Water pollution. The surface water runoff and the groundwater close to a construction site becomes polluted with various materials used in the construction work. As described for air pollution, the following construction contaminants can pollute water. VOGs, paints, glues, diesel, oils, other toxic chemicals, and cement. Both these groundwaters below your home and surface runoff close to your home will constitute a source of pollution emanating from the construction sites. Domestic animals and pets may drink contaminated water and soil may become contaminated too. We all have well water. My horses drink that water, my dogs drink that water, I drink that water. You're contaminating us. Additionally, once the groundwater below your home becomes contaminated, it may affect you in the following ways through indirect consumption. Soil pollution, all this sort of, from the perspective of the public, the best prevention is to spread as little time as possible outside. So telling us we have to stay inside while construction is going on. Secondly, first of all, you were trying to take my house. Now you're gonna try to put a freeway in front of my house. Both things unacceptable. You've tried to put through my house, which that was an error on the planning commission. They should have noticed that there was a house there. That was poor planning on your part.
Thank you.
Now you're trying to put a freeway in my house.
I have, next person signed up is Von Dennisia Harris?
Good afternoon, Von Dennisia Harris. One one seven zero two Foxfire Drive, and I have been sworn in. And I appreciate like this, like Jack said, we did a meeting last Thursday. Barbara and her team came and we really appreciate them sitting down and listening to our concerns and we felt heard. But we wanna make sure some of the things said about the traffic and the infrastructure goes through and are put in place because I feel like the infrastructure needs to, we have nothing against the growth, but we want the infrastructure to be able to support the growth. And we're not impacted because fifty-two in Colony is a nightmare. No traffic signal, you can't make a left turn. You have to make a U-turn. When you return home, you got to make a U-turn. And like they were saying, it's no deceleration lane. We, you got to be ready to turn. And you're not sure if you're coming out of, if somebody's turning into the store or where they're going or if they're gonna keep straight. So it's a lot of issues that need to be addressed with the traffic and then with the flooding. That is a big concern we have with what's gonna happen with the flooding once they put in these subdivisions because where the water is not gonna have anywhere to go. I know they were saying something about a dedicated lake. I'm not sure how that works or what that has to do with the water or controlling the flooding. Once they take away all this, all our trees. And like they were saying, the wildlife, you wake up and see anything in your yard now. It's like, you wake up and see turkeys and deers. We have all kinds of things that don't have anywhere to live now that's coming into our yards for us to help take care of them. So I really appreciate that you're taking the time to listen to us. And I definitely want anything they're gonna do to the infrastructure, to being writing and some of these things to be in writing where they can't be changed. And so I wanna thank you for your time today and I hope you consider the things that we said. And we love living on Foxfire. We love Hudson.
Mr. Chair, that's the last person that I had signed up for this item. I do not have anyone on WebEx for this item.
Is there any else in the audience who didn't speak that would like to speak to this item? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment. The applicant would like to come back up and address some of the concerns?
Barbara Willhite for the applicant. The water, we'll have central water and sewer, which is county water and sewer. We will not have wells or septic. And that comes up from Colony, up towards this project, from I think around the Fair Winds area up to this project. The, I heard numerous times about, Ms. Santero said that a builder changed the layout. And Mr. Wind said, well, is it really binding? And Ms. Harris said same thing, you know, are we really, you know, how do we know things won't change? Ms. Julian, cul-de-sac, is that really a guarantee? I can tell you, as I told the residents, that, you know, when my, when my clients say something, I make sure they do it. And so I toiled over the language, even with the cul-de-sac guarantee with Mr. Goldstein this morning. Like, we wanted to do more than just say you can't have, we're gonna have a cul-de-sac and no access to Foxfire. We actually negotiated language to go on the plat, to make sure when it's platted, that's protected. So our, our plan is a binding concept plan. So when you see where the, all the ponds are, that's where the ponds will be. So I know it, I know it's hard to believe that, but for, as a resident, because it always hasn't been that way. But we really went the extra mile to make sure, and I always do that, to make sure that if we commit to something, we do it. With regard to wildlife, we did do a wildlife survey.
Barbara?
Yeah.
If you could, hang on for a second. Can you get the picture I just showed? I know it's the same map, but I've colored in over there. I just want you to take a look at some, trying to protect the people a little bit.
Sure.
And just listening to that. So, well, it gets the picture up. At the bottom of the cul-de-sac, I colored in some blue at the end. Could you take the parcels, this would be for the developer? Could you take the parcels and just take a little bit of a sliver of land, you might say, to go, let's say, on the guy on the left side, take half the cul-de-sac, point it there, and then take another sliver to the other side around it? This way, the people that have it will have ownership. And then they'll even be better for them never to change it.
I can certainly ask my team.
He's looking at it now.
So what Edmund is saying is that the way to achieve that is with, where we have lots down there, we put them in the, in the plat for the lot. So it'd become platted lots as opposed to just being open space. That we can add that to require that any of the open space outside of the, you want your buffer tract to be owned by the HOA so it's maintained. But we'll make sure that any other open space down there is part of a platted lot.
Okay, so somehow we need to get that to the site plan. And we could do a verbal.
Yes, we can. We're gonna have to, hopefully we'll have support and we'll be fixing the paperwork with the county staff. So I was gonna say regarding wildlife, we do a survey at the time of rezoning, a listed species survey. It's done again, they only good for fifteen, eighteen months. We do them again when we come in for our plans, our development plans. But there's also an ongoing obligation. If there's listed species on the site while we construct, we have to address those. So it's not like we just look at it one time. We look at it multiple times, then we have an ongoing obligation regarding protection of listed species.
Barbara? Can you speak to the infrastructure that's coming? I think you made comment that you talked to FDOT about fifty-two in Colony and and other issues that it's important to the people, so.
Right, I've tried to do a good job. I know we have Steve Henry here too. But again, this was researched, it came up at Planning Commission. It was researched by your staff, actually, with, at Constance FDOT. They have sixty percent design plans for not only the intersection with Shadow Ridge, but the intersection of Colony and how they're gonna fix that. So they're well into their process of knowing that's an issue and fixing it. And with your, all of you contacting them, I'm sure that helps as well. It is a full median at Colony. And as, as Mr. Henry explained to me, with the development that's being approved, that needs to be told to FDOT so that they signalize it. So that's the, that's the key there.
That'd be a very much a plus, that signal there, so.
I would agree.
But it takes time to get those good things in, so.
And just running through my notes, obviously wanna be responsive, just make sure that I hit the different items. But I think I covered the different things that I heard. But if you have any other questions, we are, our team is here.
Chair. Commissioner Whitman?
Thank you. To, when we discussed before the realignment of Colony, the emphasis on Mr. Reavis's parcel. I'm not gonna speak for him, but he seemed a little more comfortable with the alignment of the road. I couldn't tell. Let's hope you can have some more dialogue on the south side of your, of your project with, with the work that, that y'all put into it. Because he's got, aside from this, he seemingly has some discrepancies or a variation in the amount of feet of the right-of-way within his property. And I was hoping you could explain how this more organizes what he has going on on his, his place there.
So there's multiple things that you all have done to address improvements to Colony Road over time. You have a route study that has a hundred and twenty-four foot corridor which goes into his property. You have right-of-way preservation tables that provide for a hundred and forty-two feet, I think. And that also goes into his property. And, and what happens with those right-of-way preservation tables? If you come in for a building permit to do a shed within the right-of-way preservation area, you're told you can't do that. So what you all need to do is, hopefully you will support this project, but have staff go in and amend those tables so that you are consistent with the sixty-foot right-of-way section that the county engineer is supporting and suggesting to you. But you'll want to actually get in there and do the other paperwork to make sure that the sixty feet is what you do moving forward so that people all along the corridor don't have issues with the fact that their property could be within a corridor preservation area.
So, Mr. Goldstein, so to do that, what steps? What's next steps with that piece of this equation here? That way it gives the property to the south, you know, he's not handcuffed, whatever he might wanna do with it in the future, and he can gain more of his property back.
So a couple of things. One is we do need to amend the comp plan, basically the highway vision map and possibly the highway vision map and definitely the corridor preservation tables. The other thing that likely needs to be updated is the PDNE. And whether we do an updated PDNE or route study will also depend on the acquisition of that right-of-way to the south and when we plan to do that.
So this, and this will come at no cost to that property owner?
Unless the property is gonna come in and do development.
He just wants to live there and have the ability to do what he wants to do on it. This should theoretically give him more of his right-of-way back to him and allow him to have more flexibility on his property. But he can't do that until we, the county, fix what we have going on.
So it's fairly routine for us to update our corridor preservation tables and our highway vision maps. So we, we do that on a routine basis. But even in the interim, if, if, my guess, based on the way the county engineer reacted to this one, if they thought of variance or alternative standard to not use the sixty-foot cross-section, we probably would approve it. Because the same, the same variation that Barbara's processing today to narrow the right-of-way to sixty feet, if, if he wanted to come in and build something, my guess is that we'd approve it for the same reasons we'd be approving Barbara's today.
Well, I'd like, while he's here, I know we've got public comment closed. But if you have somebody get with Reavis and help him give clarity, because he's seemingly been looking for clarity on this issue for a number of years since before we took office.
Up until a couple of weeks ago, this, there wasn't a narrow sixty-foot cross-section for this road. It was the hundred and
Twenty.
Hundred and sixty or hundred and forty.
Hundred and forty-two or hundred and twenty, depending.
There was just a PDNE study which showed much more right-of-way being needed for these, not just for this property, but all the properties on the corridor. So that was a recent decision. If we, the board follows through with that decision today, it's gonna set a precedent. And my guess is that we're gonna assume that's gonna be the cross-section for this entire corridor. Unless Nick tells me I'm wrong.
Thumbs up.
You got a thumbs up.
And then, and another piece, meeting was, speaking with folks who live out there, Tony, I sent you an email. Pull up a PDF. And so we're looking at the history of Shady Oaks Ranches, I met with folks and kind of trying to understand the story behind the area here. And this wasn't, I don't, I don't believe this, this, this was shared, but when this was approved in the seventies, what the lots were, and then to today, how the lots have been subdivided and subdivided and subdivided into the future land use of what this current project is. I think it's just an important visual. That way people can see how this area has evolved and what property owners have done with their property because they're legally able to do it over the course of time. And I think it's just an important picture to see how this area has changed and that the property owners and each one of you that own property do have the ability to subdivide your property if you choose to. And that, what's going on here? And you can see the big section in the northeast corner, it's, it's, it's not a new phenomenon. I mean, the, the map on the left from the nineteen seventies and the one on the right is from twenty twenty-five. So I just think that was an important visual for folks to see as we're making the decision. Because you talk about fairness and owning property. The crux of this is the Palm Winds, and this, this is what frustrates me with this, is the Palm Winds project pushed this road west to the Seckleson property. And seemingly, they had no idea. It was a, an example of a can that's been kicked. And it forced a road west that impacted the property that we'll be voting on today and then the properties to the south of it. And quite frankly, that was, it was disappointing to, to see how that gamesmanship was done. And when you talk about fairness, it wasn't fair to do to the Seckleson piece. What could or what should has gone, gone by and what we know about the Palm Winds property east of here. But moving forward, I hope staff takes this real-life example of how these roads are just pushed and when things come. And it's a, it's a surprise to everybody. We need to have a better plan, a better communication plan to the residents in the area. I think when we have the swaths of lands where projects are coming, that we just shouldn't, unless there's good reason, to move vision roads like we've had and examples like this. And we get, we get better at this exercise. So I don't know if Ms. White or staff, you have any comments on the points I've, I've brought up today? But I just thought it was important to, to share these things.
Commissioner Oaken?
Barbara, correct me if I am, but I think with the realignment of the road that we talked about this week, or Monday, the, the distance to the edge of the road, I believe, from this particular house, it gave them fifty-five feet, I think, from the road's edge to the front of the house, which was a lot less when they had the four angle in. I think that's a great improvement and that gives her a, a good front yard in that area.
That's correct. And that's the measurements my team made.
Commissioner Yeager?
Oh, no, I just, I guess my, my question is, Mr. Reavis, when we had talked about that traffic and I had suggested possibly a stop sign, that, you said no to that, right? I said, when we were talking about, you were concerned about the traffic in front of your house? And we had suggested maybe a stop sign?
You can't speak.
Sorry, I, I'm asking a question. I'm sending you.
She's asking a question.
But no, he's gotta, he's speaking at the microphone.
I apologize, you need me to state my name?
Just say your name again, and then you can proceed.
Reavis Johns, one one nine three four Foxfire Drive. Yes, that, I, I would prefer not to because I believe with the traffic flow there now, if he was to put a stop sign on the other side, I don't think I'd be able to get out of my driveway, just for the simple fact of everybody stopping the way traffic runs there. The other day, I had to sit and wait for thirteen cars to go by without a stop sign.
Okay. I just wanted to address that because
It's not getting any better.
I know it was a concern of yours, so.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Commissioner.
Ma'am, you can't speak from there. So on this property, when you build a road, there'll be sidewalks running. So, on this property, when you build the road, there'll be sidewalks running down on the Colony Road coming down?
Their, their, the cross-section has 10-feet multi-use path on each side.
Okay. No, I think it's cheaper if you guys were building the road at the start compared to us, us coming in after the fact, but that may happen. Let me ask this question. If we're going to try to work with the other developments and get the impact fees to go pay the road, I would like you guys at a point in time, let's say we decide we put a road plan together, and let's say I've got the money that I need all except for 700 grand, that you guys will confirm to put up, if we're ready, to put up that 700 grand at that moment, so I can build the road.
Hold on, let me talk to my client.
And while you have that conversation, if you want what we can even do to give you the option, let, let's say that you're going to go along and you're, you're moving along, and you actually think you can build it cheaper than what the stated for the numbers here, and you want to then build the road while you're there, so it's that much more built, I'm willing to give you that flexibility too.
I think David and I could write a condition that achieves that. I mean, ultimately, the way these mobility fees would be paid, and this is the point the commissioner is making, is we pay them with each CO.
Right.
As opposed to if we were the missing funding of our mobility fees, the client could then prepay those mobility fees. Obviously, they would get credits, but could, could prepay them. So, I think it's a, but I think we could achieve some language, David, that.
If, mostly what the commissioner is looking for is that if we have a plan to fund Colony that you might have to prepay your mobility fees.
Right.
Yes, we could write that condition, if that's what you're looking for.
Yes, and, and so, so as quick as we can get it together to do that and, and move forward, providing what this board does, I want to give them the option either do it to where they can pave the road quickly, or we can just add it in to do ours.
Yeah, the only thing I would ask that you do is, if, if this is a priority for the board to do Colony, then you probably need to relook at your CIP and, and make it a priority in your CIP, and then balance it against the other projects that are in the CIP, because even if they prepay their mobility fees, it's not going to be enough to get Colony built, so.
Agreed, and that's why I say, if, if in fact, if in fact we do come to the point where, okay, we're going to build the road, then we can reach out to get this, the 700 grand left on impact fees for them to pay us, so we can pay the road.
If Barbara's client's willing to agree that, I'm okay with it. I just, there is a state law that generally says that we can't force somebody to pay their, their impact fees prior to building permit, but if she's willing to voluntarily agree to that, I can, we can work with that.
Okay.
Yeah, but the amount would vary, because it's based upon what we, you know.
Subject to what, subject to what the impact fee total is.
Right.
To be reimbursed with mobility.
We can work on a prepay mobility fee condition with, with Mr. Goldstein.
All right. We'll see what the temperature of the board is to make this happen, but, okay. County attorney has given me some language, I wonder if you read that?
Sure.
So, this is, this is language to protect the cul-de-sac, so the cul-de-sac stays there, so the connection does, does not ever go through to connect to Foxfire.
The property south of the cul-de-sac, adjacent to Foxfire, shall be platted as a separate track for landscape slash roadway buffer and conveyed to the homeowners association for maintenance, rather than including it in the lots.
That's fine, that's what power D, so yes, we can add that. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if we ever got an answer for planning on the distance for the approximate that you wanted.
Okay, I think we're going to come up with one.
4 million playing development economic growth. Since it, since it's an irregularly shaped parcel of, I've given you two distances. One is the closest and one is the furthest as a range to, to pick from. The closest is a quarter mile from the closest piece of this to Fox, to, to Petrie, and then the furthest is .37 miles.
Point what?
.37 miles.
Okay, so I'm, I'm happy to use, instead of the word approximately, a half a mile. Is that okay?
Barbara, you okay with that?
Yes, a half a mile's fine.
Okay. Any questions for staff? So, let me just have a little, I'll just bring up another discussion for the board. So, looking at the $5.2 million worth of impact fees, Colony Road, the intersection's being looked at with DOT, 60% design, I feel good that's moving forward. When I look at Brighton, we're going to be working with them as well between the right-of-way and flooding that's all along that road, which this new alignment may actually help them with taking care of that. But as I look at the road, whether the road gets done or not, I'm not so concerned. I will say something that does concern me a little bit as I'm thinking this through. I think if we look at the number that's here, at 2.1 million is what we're going to need, I think we should also look to include, to try to put at least a trail or a sidewalk, whatever it's going to be, running up from 52 Colony all the way up to, so if there are any children, whatever, there's, you know, there's Dunkin' Donuts down there, retail.
Didn't ask this, but are they connecting sidewalks or trails near this anyway, or not?
We could actually.
I mean.
We could possibly use another, the funding source penny for Pasco.
They can check it out, I mean.
Yeah, because, because it actually, Nick was going to do that for, along Hudson Avenue, use that funding source to connect that, so actually.
Right.
That could be a, a funding source we use as well. Excellent idea.
All right.
Did you want to say something, Ms. Jager?
Oh, I, I was just going to ask Terry, Terry, can, can you pull up the, the Milton map, just to show where the?
Yes, but I'll have to talk to Tony.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to address the, the flooding concern for the, one of the residents that spoke.
Hmm.
I want to thank my commissioners for taking the time to meet with these folks on such a short notice too, so I appreciate it.
It was very worthwhile.
Yes.
And then same Doug, and Barbara and her group met with them too, and with you, I think, and.
Yes.
That was very well done, and showed we're working toward the right thing. These are bigger lots, larger lots.
Yes.
And they're going to be nice homes and a nice development.
Yeah.
If you want a development coming in, this is the kind you won't coming in, because if you get those developments like some we built a few years back when we first got started, we had some 40-foot lot developments, you really wouldn't want that at all. So, this is a very good development.
A good step up to kind of minimize the.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm sorry, I thought that would be an easy pull-up.
That's what I was going to say, thank you.
So, while we're waiting for that, so is, is the board comfortable looking at using the impact fees directed to this project to get Colony Road done, if we do make the approval on this?
To do what now?
To use the impact fees from the developments, Palm Winds and Brighton, Brighton Bay, to help get this Colony Road section done.
So, Mr. Chair, I don't have a problem with the, the board prioritizing this road in the CIP, but that action really needs to be part of your CIP process, because as Nick, I'm going to get Nick back up here, he doesn't allocate his fees based on specific projects. I mean, we can get this project to prepay their fees, but he's got to balance that need against the remainder of his CIP. If the board wants to make this road a priority, they certainly can as part of the CIP. Next, you've got a budget coming through right now, and you can absolutely make this road a priority in your CIP. And that, that actually will get mobility fees, not just from this surrounding area, but the whole west zone.
From that zone, yeah.
So, but I think it really should be done as part of your CIP process.
I, I know it has to be, but I want to make sure if I get the support to make sure this road's going to get built if we're going to approve the development. So, I'm trying to get at least.
Okay.
I think you've got other, you've got other developments coming in this area, and those developments will have mobility fees also that will be going into the same fund, and I think in the, they can work toward doing the right thing in the right areas as soon as possible, and I, I think that's what can happen, so.
This seems like a bit of a horse trade here, Chair Mariano.
It's, well.
So, if you're wanting commitment to, for roads right now, then I'm going to throw out there on the opposite side to call your Parkway extension, so I think we need to have.
Different district.
I think we, I think we need to have, I, I think, I, I want to support it, but I'm, I think we need to have a separate conversation regarding the roads and CIP. Every road's important, this is important north, south.
Yeah, they're all important.
But there's, I think we need to have a, not confuse this, this particular issue with a, with a bigger discussion on roads.
Question, David, is this in, this is in the furthest west district, correct?
I believe so. Terry or Nick, do you know that, can you confirm that?
Because I don't think it's, it wouldn't be in the Collier one.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The district that, impact.
Does it cut at 41?
Where does, what's the cut line on the, the north, south on the impact fees?
Here comes the answer.
There we go.
I knew there was a reason this was a hard question. Again, Nick, you're a county engineer, that, the cut line is Gunn Highway at the southern part of the county, and then it goes vertically north, due north from Gunn Highway across 54, and then follows the power line easement, which is why I couldn't think of, there's not a road that divides benefit zone one from benefit zone two, but it's all west of the Suncoast Parkway.
Right.
So, to your point, Collier is in zone two.
So, it is the other side. So, yeah, so I think it's, you know, Suncoast Parkway's pretty close to it, so.
Yeah. I would feel.
That's what I'm saying, I'm not, I'm not trying to take out of a different district, but I just want to make sure with the three developments that are going right here, knowing all this north south's traffic is coming.
And that Foxfire is dangerous.
Exactly, it's, it's super dangerous.
Mr. Chair, if I could, a few things that I would feel remiss if I didn't mention. First is, you do have a commissioner paying attention to the meeting from, from Europe, who has texted me with reticence that we would delay construction of DeCubilis in order to prioritize this project. So, just know that she's out there watching. I, I also want to say, one of the things that we are, we hear you as far as the need for connectivity in this area, that I, I hear you as, as to the importance of that, and we will seek to try to make that happen in a most, in the most efficient way, acknowledging some trade-offs. One of the things that you, you brought up toward the end of the discussion was the provision of pathways. One of the constraints on Colony Road is the right-of-way footprint that we control. So, the wider that footprint gets, the more right-of-way we have to go out and, and acquire, and that makes it a more challenging project to implement. So, what I would like is, just to, for the board's awareness, that I hear you, that we need to look at advancing connectivity in the development of our CIP for your approval as part of this fiscal '26 budget season.
Yeah.
Please don't give me too many constraints to operate within, so that we can try to achieve the outcomes that you're seeking without unintended ancillary impacts.
Right. Well, Nick, and I, I'm happy to work with you on it. Again, I just, I can't talk to my board members unless I'm in front of them, so we have to have the discussion now. I've got the people that are here too, I want them to hear the conversation we're having, and I want to, I want to give you kudos, because you've been fantastic since you've been here. When we had the development coming up on Hudson Avenue, you found a way to use the penny money to make sure the sidewalks are being done all the way through. So, I know.
Caveat on that. I need to turn that back to the board and say, that is your reward, that, that is recognition of your foresight. That was a penny for Pasco project established in the resolution in 2022 before I arrived. So, I didn't have the foresight, you had the foresight. I'm now working with my team.
You're working with them.
To implement your vision.
And, and I appreciate you listening to, to that, to make it go, because it could, could happen different ways. So, I, I appreciate everything you're doing, and I got, I got good confidence at this moment, so thank you.
Okay.
Okay, can we, Terry?
Victorius Pito's playing development economic growth. So, what's on the overhead and displayed in, in front of you are aerial images that were taken in October of 2024. The aerial images are named Milton on the internal system. They, they show, they, they show in some areas where flooding has occurred as a consequence of some of the storm activity that occurred at that time. It doesn't appear that there's any visible flooding, at least from the aerial.
Thank you. I, I, somebody had, had concerns about flooding, and I just wanted to show them on the map, so, thank you.
And if I could just, the, the flooding they may have been talking about might have been by Brighton Bay.
Okay.
And literally, if you saw the road where they built, and I, I showed pictures of this, I think, at the last meeting, the meeting before, they've got a roadway, they've got a pipe, and there's no drainage that's there. So, it's something we're going to be working on, but it, it very well could happen just from that alone, being elevated up, but more so not holding the drainage on site, which it, which it should, so.
Worth noting, Mr. Chairman, is that the aerial, I was just informed, was flown 36 to 48 hours after the event, so.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, if we have the cul-de-sac's language, the half a mile laws in 53 that protects everybody with the agricultural designation, and the fact that if we ask for the impact fees to be prepaid, if we're getting ready to do the road, that they're willing to do that, I'm comfortable with the other things that are being moved forward with staff.
Okay. So, Chair, or County Attorney, does there need to be, with everything that's been discussed today, how's, how's a potential motion look like, look?
There have been three additions.
Four.
Well, there was all of the changes that Barbara handed out initially.
Okay.
There was the change to remove, if applicable, from.
We, we nixed that one.
Are we not doing that one? Okay. The removal of the word proximate and changing it to half a mile.
Yep.
The addition of the condition to prepay the mobility fees if we have a plan to fund Colony Road.
And the cul-de-sac.
And the cul-de-sac condition that you read. I think I've covered everything, but Barbara, did I miss anything? Okay.
So, the motion would be approve the MPUD rezoning request, subject to the rezoning conditions in your agenda package, plus those that were handed out at the meeting, and those that have been orally put into the record.
I had one more thing to that, which is approve the LDC variation for them to not have to connect to Foxfire.
And approve the LDC. Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Wasn't there one other thing we were going to do for the, for the residents about zoning with their land, or?
That was the half a mile.
Oh, okay, the half a mile, okay.
So, we need a second.
We need a second.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes for him.
Chair, and then Chair, David or somebody, I think, to get with Rivas and to help him realign his, his property while he's here.
I will work with him, and I'll tell Mrs. Erickson I will work with her too, to try to keep that road as far away and buffered as best I can for her too.
Have to go back to archives to help him on that, I think.
All right. Any else come before the board?
No.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you all very much, greatly appreciate it.